Great, thanks again and thanks everyone for your questions. I hope you enjoyed asking your question.
Hi, Dave.
That will be it for the day. You asked your question.
I'm going a little late.
Just teasing. So let me invite Gary and Dorothy up and while they're coming up, introduce them. If I were to step way back from the first discussion, what we have more than anything is we have an education system that is leaking talent. And it's leaking talent at a time when we desperately need that talent in every aspect of society and where we especially need to recruit and retain talent among communities that don't have an automatic pathway or have not had an automatic pathway to college. And poor kids, kids of color, immigrant communities, we know the list. We looked a lot at the leakage in the higher ed system and now we're going to turn and talk a little bit as background about the leakage in the K-12 system and what we can do about that. Critical to plugging those holes is creating a sense of student, deep student engagement with the work. And for a variety of reasons that we'll probably get into, that kind of engagement has been hard to come by, again particularly in traditionally underserved, with traditionally underserved communities. So we have in this next panel, two national and international experts to help us think about some of the things that are happening to create a new level, a higher level of student engagement with the work of schools and by that connection, also changing the work of schools to make it more engaging and more relevant to students. First up will be Gary Hoeklander, who is the president of Connect Ed, the California Center for College and Career. Gary began his career as a brakeman for the Western Maryland Railroad and it's been downhill without a break since then. He's devoted most of his professional life to helping young people learn by doing, connecting education to the opportunities, challenges, and many different rewards to be found in the world of work. Gary's widely known for his expertise in career and technical education and has consulted extensively for the U.S. Department of Education, for state departments of education around the country, local school districts, foundations, and a variety of other clients. Gary earned his bachelor's degree at Princeton and holds a master's and PhD from the Department of City and Regional Planning at the University of California at Berkeley, and Gary has a terrific board chair.
Full disclosure, that is Ted Mitchell.
Dorothy Rothrock, welcome Dorothy. I won't give you quite as much grief as Gary. Is Vice President of Government Relations for CMTA. And before coming to CMTA in February of 2000, she was a consultant on energy and telecommunications regulatory issues for industrial and energy users, policy advocates, and economic research firms. She began her career at Portland General Corporation as an attorney, moving successively up through management positions in commercial operations, public affairs, and power marketing prior to relocating to California in 1990. We're very happy to have a refugee from Oregon and also to enjoy the export of a terrific University of Oregon and Lewis and Clark Law School graduate.
Go Ducks!
Go Ducks! Welcome Gary, welcome Dorothy.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. It is a pleasure to be here. As Ted indicated, I did start my career as a brakeman for the Western Maryland Railroad. I got a very early lesson in the disconnect between force and motion as it is taught in high school physics and what it takes to really stop 40 tank cars each weighing two tons each as they roll down off the hump in Hagerstown, Maryland. And I've sort of been fighting that battle ever since. It is a pleasure to be here this afternoon and I did not realize until I arrived that this was the first joint meeting. And so it really is kind of a special privilege and honor for me as representing Connect Ed to have the opportunity to also talk to you about linked learning. And what I really want to spend a few minutes speaking with you this afternoon is about connections, about connecting career and technical education with challenging academics, about connecting school and work, about connecting secondary and post-secondary, and connecting college and career. So thank you very, very much. It adds a kind of special honor and symbolism to being here this afternoon. I've had the real privilege these past four years with the support of the James Irvine Foundation to be able to work with a growing number of high school districts and high schools throughout the state of California to help design, implement, expand, improve what we call linked learning, pathways to college and career success. And I want to spend just a few minutes giving you a quick overview of what we mean by linked learning and then also highlight, I think, some, by no means all, and perhaps not even the most important, but some critical issues that I think are appropriate for you as joint governing boards to consider with respect to advancing this work. There's no one right way to do this. There are lots of interesting approaches to linked learning emerging in high schools throughout California, but they all share four common guiding principles. And the first is that this work is about preparing students for both college and career, no longer one or the other, but both. The word college gets us all into a lot of trouble and I want to be very clear what we mean by it. We mean the full range of post-secondary options. By college, we certainly mean four-year college and university. We mean two-year community college. We mean apprenticeship. We mean formal employment training, the full array of post-secondary options after high school. And designing pathways that will enable students to choose among those options without the kind of tracking that has typified the California high school, the American high school for much of the 20th century. And to do that, a critical element of all of this is connecting core academics, the math, the science, the English, the social studies, to real-world applications and really challenging career and technical education. Students ask, and you've heard it many, many times, why do I need to know this? It's a fair question and they deserve an answer and we believe that connecting career and technical education to core academics is one strategy, not the only strategy, for trying to answer that. Because this is, in the end, about improving student achievement in all of its dimensions, not just academic, and we could have a discussion about that issue in particular. So when we talk about a pathway, a linked learning pathway, it can take the form in California high schools of partnership academies, career academies, theme-based high schools like Health Professions High School here in Sacramento. But whatever the approach, they have four components. There is a challenging academic core, math, science, English, social studies, foreign language. There is a technical core, career and technical core of four or more courses that meet industry standards where appropriate, provide certification, not always possible in every pathway. There is a work-based learning component. It may begin with mentoring or job shadowing in ninth grade, but it evolves by 12th grade into internships, preferably paid but also unpaid. It can take the form of virtual apprenticeship such as ACME animation programs. It can take the form of school-based learning, but really robust attempts to connect what goes on in the classroom to real-world application, not just work experience. And finally, the fourth component, support services, counseling certainly, but especially supplementary instruction in reading, writing, and mathematics. Because as you all know, we have far too many young people coming into the ninth grade who are not sufficiently proficient in those subjects. If we don't provide that supplemental instruction, we're set up to fail. We're working with districts to develop menus of pathways, choices for students, and we use the 15 major industry sectors that are the organizing framework for California's standards in career and technical education. I won't name them all, but obviously we're talking about pathways in architecture, construction, and engineering, biomedical and health science, law and justice, media and digital design, that kind of broad-based approach to designing a comprehensive four-year program of academic and technical study. Here is simply one example of a pathway in architecture, construction, and engineering in your handout. I share another one for digital and media design. And I think the critical point is to understand that this is a pathway that spans grades nine through 12, that combines core academics with four years of career and technical education. The academics are not taught the same way. It's very important to understand that a critical feature of pathways is using the pathway theme to really bring meaning and life and understanding to the mathematics, the English, the science, the social studies that we're asking students to master. So it does mean not lowering standards, but going about the business of instruction in very, very different ways in high school. In this particular example, a student completing this particular pathway would complete actually 18 rather than the minimum 15 academic courses that are required to be eligible for admission to the University of California, the California State University System, and I would argue in order to have a really high probability of succeeding in community college. It's not required for community college, but I would hope that we would not have a long argument about the value of that kind of academic preparation for success in community college as well. Is it worth it? I won't spend a lot of time on the evidence. There are some in your handout, there's more on our website. But when we look at what happens to students who participate in career academies, in California partnership academies, we find that they pass the California high school exit exam at much higher rates. Those of you who know the Casey, it's not a high-level test. It's not really a high school exit exam. It's an eighth-grade test. It's a junior high exit exam. But when we look at performance on the CSTs, we also find that students who are in these pathways are more proficient, more likely to score proficient or higher in English, Science, and Social Studies. There is a notable course missing, and that is mathematics. We have a huge challenge, not only for students participating in pathways, but as you know better than I, for raising mathematics achievement throughout. Students in partnership academies are much more likely to complete the minimum A to G requirements. Remember, California partnership academies are required by law to serve at least 50% of students who are at high risk of dropping out of high school, much higher proportions than the population at large. But we find that 50% of seniors in California partnership academies have completed the minimum A to G requirements compared to 37% of seniors statewide. These students attend at higher rates, they're less likely to drop out, more likely to complete high school. And one of the most rigorous evaluations that has been done of academies by the MDRC, a randomized experimental design study that has followed students now for eight years after high school, finds that students who participate in career academies, males in particular, are earning on the average $2,500 per year more than their counterparts for eight years after high school, $20,000 more over eight years. Those of you who follow education research, it's very rare to see an impact of that magnitude in any kind of education program offering. With the support of the James Irvine Foundation, we've been very privileged to be able to make grants of $1.1 million each to now nine districts throughout the state of California that are listed here, including Los Angeles, Montebello, Oakland, to name just a couple, who are working with us to accomplish two objectives. One, to design and implement district-wide systems of pathways and building the district policies, the district infrastructure that it takes to support and sustain this work over time. And also at the school site level, the pathway level, focusing on developing really high-quality offerings that meet certification requirements that have been developed now in collaboration with the California Department of Education, the National Career Academy Support Coalition, and the Career Academy Support Network at the University of California, Berkeley, and the National Academy Foundation. In the handout, I list a number of policy issues that we're learning from doing this work on the ground are critical to advancing this, but I want to focus on three that I think are particularly germane to this meeting here this afternoon. And that is, first of all, the importance, as we talk about this work, as we do this work, and we talk about the role of career and technical education in secondary and post-secondary, I would really urge that we take a systemic approach, that we pay serious attention to how to connect career and technical education to core academics, to work-based learning, and to the supplemental instruction that students need in order to succeed in high school. As was just mentioned in the previous session, there's a lot of work that we need to do at the state level to better connect, articulate secondary and post-secondary offerings of this kind of pathway opportunity. We have a lot of work to do in better aligning courses and programs of study and majors and strategies for really engaging industry in this pathway design implementation at both the secondary and post-secondary level. And I can think of no better place to start that work than at this level. As you all know, too much articulation now happens only at the local level. It's very ad hoc, it's highly varied, and could be much more effective. And thirdly, and this was also mentioned, I can think of no more appropriate place to begin to tackle some of, I think, the very doable issues around making dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment accessible to many, many more students in high school. If we're really going to scale this work, if we're going to make it available to significant numbers of high school students, we have a real challenge in finding talented faculty who can deliver not only the academic but especially the technical component of this. And a lot of that expertise resides in community colleges. But we have huge barriers, financial and otherwise, to making that kind of dual enrollment possible. In my own view, and it's easy to say this, it's probably harder to do, this is a fixable problem. We need to figure out what the marginal savings are to K-12 when students are concurrently enrolled in community college, what the marginal costs are to community colleges for that. If there's a difference, we need to look at it, figure out how we're going to fund it. And most importantly, we need just a sensible set of procedures that will allow K-12 to purchase those kinds of dual enrollment services from any post-secondary system, community colleges certainly especially, but one can imagine that it's equally appropriate for CSU and UC. So you want to learn more about us and what we're doing, by all means, visit our website. I think you'll find it's a rich source of information, both visually and text-wise, and I'd encourage you to come visit us there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much, everybody, and I really appreciate the roses. Not only a duck, I'm from the city of roses.
Roseville.
But I was paying attention to you, too. I was just smelling roses. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this special event. CMTA is the California Manufacturers and Technology Association. And we're a trade association in California representing a very diverse manufacturing sector in California, large and small companies of all types, including aerospace, refiners, computer manufacturers, food processors, pharmaceuticals, and many more. We have a very diverse manufacturing economy in California. We've been interested in education issues because a skilled workforce, of course, is vital to our success as a competitive sector. Finding skilled workers is cited as the one or two top issue for my manufacturing members. The National Association of Manufacturers cites a serious and persistent shortage of qualified workers from production to the scientist-to-engineer levels. They cite needs for highly skilled, innovated, quote, "high-performance workforce" that technological trade and competitive forces will act to reduce jobs in the future for lower-skilled workers. So I very much endorse some of the things that were reported earlier by PPIC on this issue. So improving education outcomes is very important. What I want to share with you today is our belief that neglect and devaluation of career and technical education in California public schools is a major contributor to our workforce challenges, as well as poor education outcomes generally, such as the high school dropout rate and disengaged students. Unfortunately, the decline in CTE has been widespread and persistent for decades, showing no signs of letting up. In 1987, three-quarters of secondary students had access to and enrolled in campus-based CTE programs. This year, it's below 29%. We need to turn this around. Significant expansion of rigorous and relevant CTE is vital to improving student performance, reducing dropouts, and meeting our workforce needs. So how does our focus on the need for more and better CTE relate to some of the recommendations made by PPIC and the comments here from Connect Ed? See, I'm here to mix it up a little bit. First of all, we're not convinced that the 2025 economy will demand 41% of the population to achieve four-year degrees. The PPIC calculates this demand based on historical trends and wage premiums enjoyed by four-year degree holders, but the Bureau of Labor Statistics says that in 2025, we'll need 27% of the population to have skills related to four-year degrees, and that's well within the current trajectory that PPIC anticipated. I think 35% is a sort of trend of normal from here that we would meet. BLS also estimates that jobs requiring an associate's degree or a post-secondary certificate are growing 60% faster than the job market as a whole. We believe that the current and potential value of high school, technical training, and two-year associate degrees and certificates has not been appropriately accounted for in the PPIC projections. Before making bold adjustments to the master plan, we should better understand what types of education and skills we anticipate needing in the future and how to most effectively provide that education. PPIC suggests that engineering and business majors will be in high demand. Others have mentioned healthcare. The National Association of Manufacturers is creating certification paths for high-demand occupations related to manufacturing needs. The point is that jobs, good jobs, will be available at all levels of achievement for high-demand occupations. We also believe PPIC's recommendations to broaden eligibility to the CSU and UC is an expensive and inefficient way to increase the number of college graduates. That wasn't mentioned very much in the presentation this morning, but one of the reports recommends a percentage increase in eligibility, availability for those institutions. There's a very high cost to the taxpayers and students for the CSU and UC alternatives versus community college followed by the transfer. This is especially true if the two years of community college experience helps direct a student to the appropriate school and degree and avoids expensive mistakes associated with starting with a UC and CSU and then dropping out or switching direction after only one or two years. The fact that too many four-year college graduates are entering community colleges, presumably to gain workforce skills they did not get in their four-year degree program or because their career interest does not match their degree. According to the most recent stats, three times as many four-year degree holders are enrolling in our community colleges than the AA or AS holders are matriculating up to the four-year programs. We should do what we can to prevent these costly inefficiencies, given that taxpayers subsidize each UC student 20 grand a year, CSU student 15 grand a year, but only $4,500 a year for each community college student. We should consider greatly increased funding for community college attendance and improve the transfer rates to four-year programs. We could limit the size of freshman and sophomore classes in the CSU and UC systems, saving taxpayers and students money, thereby making more room for upper-level students in those more expensive institutions. We could also identify particular paths of study most likely to meet the economic needs and create targets to expand those programs in the community college, CSU, and UC systems. Finally, it's vital that we address fundamental problems in the P-16 program as part of our plan. PPIC outlined some of the problems in their reports. Too many students that admitted that need remediation, college dropout rates are high, transfer rates are low, students need extra years to graduate, fees are up, taxpayer contributions are declining, the challenges are huge. CMTA and other groups have been working on this at the legislature through Get Real. It's a coalition of employers, labor groups, educators, and individuals concerned about the ongoing decline of CTE in the high schools. We attribute some, if not most, of the problems to the A through G college admissions standards and practices that are taking up most of the school day and fail to encourage students to take relevant, rigorous CTE courses. It's wrong that a student focused on going to college should not take CTE courses in their areas of interest and potential major because they will count less, or not at all, on their admissions application in foreign language, for example. And it is even more distressing that the focus on making all students eligible for entry to a four-year college and the pressure of budget cuts on school curricula has caused CTE to dwindle even for the majority of our students not bound for four-year institutions right out of high school. We need 100% of our students in 2050 to become qualified workers, not just the 35% to 41% that will end up with college degrees. So Connect Ed's idea to integrate CTE and academics to require all high school students to meet A through G standards would theoretically serve both our goals, a skilled workforce and more college-ready students. In fact, partnership academies similar to the model described are successful for those lucky few that can attend these high schools. But the approach is extremely expensive and not likely to serve more than a small fraction of the student population anytime soon, if ever. We fear that policymakers are becoming enamored with the Connect Ed approach and this is distracting them from steps that can and should be taken now to preserve and expand CTE courses in the high schools for all students. It will be very expensive to rebuild these programs if they're allowed to continue to languish. We think that all forms of industry-relevant, hands-on CTE delivery models should be preserved and enhanced at our secondary schools, not just those deemed worthy of UC and CSU admission standards. So in conclusion, CMTA believes a master plan should ensure that CTE is an integral part of every student's educational experience, including college-bound and students at risk of dropping out. We believe that when a student participates in a series of CTE courses in high school, they'll be more successful in their educational pursuits, including college, so it isn't an either-or choice. This policy will help ensure that all students will be productive participants in the California economy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent combination of presentations and I'm sure that there are absolutely no questions or comments.
First one.
Give on.
Thank you, Dorothy, and thank you, Gary. I want to personally thank you, Gary. A year ago, you mentored me. Do you remember me calling you about how to roll out the CTE? Well, two questions. First one is to do with, as we advocate for the pathway themed and linked, you know, learning schematic, to what extent you think you can really integrate the career tech courses into our cross-curriculum? For example, you know, your construction technology into geometry. So that's question one. Is it possible? Really marry those two disciplines instead of teacher A teaches this class, teacher B teaches that one, and they never met and they never talk. Second question has to do with the recent report that we all received, the multiple pathway. I believe, you know, you guys authored that and thanks Teresa for sending it to us. There, they talk about A through G, talk about maybe we should get rid of A through G. So can both of you help me, you know, if we're going to get rid of A through G, if you have the way, how can we do that? How do we replace it? What system can we put in place?
Two tough questions. And I will come back and address the AB 2648 report in a moment. I do want to emphasize, we did not author it. In fact, it was done by the California Department of Education, working very closely with West Ed. Pat Ainsworth is here and really led that effort. I do think it's a superb report, but I can take no credit for the quality of what was done. So to answer your two questions, integration is hard. It's not easy to do and teachers have not been taught how to do it well. And to do it well... And to do this work well, we have a major challenge in front of us in preparing both academic and technical teachers in how to do it better. That said, it can be done. It is being done. And in fact, to be very concrete about it, if you go to our website, you'll find, for example, that there is both a pre-algebra and an Algebra I curriculum that has been designed specifically for use in pathways in architecture, construction, and engineering, where students are using real-world application in construction, whether it's bridge building or vernacular building or whatever, to understand basic principles of pre-algebra and algebra. Again, it takes that kind of nitty-gritty work on the ground to design the curriculum, to train the teachers in how to do it. But when it is done, we find two things. One, students are far more engaged in that kind of instruction, and they are doing much better on the CSTs that are assessing mathematics instruction, both at the pre-algebra and the Algebra I level. So I would never claim for a moment that it's easy to do. It depends, I think, ideally on team teaching between academic and career and technical teachers. Academic teachers rarely have the experience in sort of the real-world application of their particular discipline. Often, the CTE teachers have not been trained in how to really emphasize the academic content of their particular industry or field. So there's, there's work to be done on that front. With respect to, and, and tell me, your, your question again with respect to AB 26, the AB 2648 report was?
This has to do with A-through-G.
A-through-G, thank you.
Okay.
So, okay, let's spend a couple minutes on this, and Dorothy should chime in. Because, you know, I think we, we make a whole lot more of this than, than we ought to be making of it. First of all, let me be very clear that Connect Ed has never said that completion of the A-to-G requirement should be a requirement for high school graduation. There are some districts, as you know, LA Unified, Oakland, others that have adopted that policy. We believe where that policy has been adopted, that pathways are a very effective way for ensuring that more students do that. But I think we can have a very, it's important to have a real discussion about the wisdom of requiring A-to-G completion for all students. But let's not confuse that with the need for all students to be mastering a higher level of proficiency in mathematics, English, science, and social studies. That's, we have to absolutely be about that agenda, and let's not get into a big debate about whether A-to-G does that very well or not. I really think that's the wrong discussion to be having. We need to focus much more concretely on what is the knowledge and skill in these disciplines that we think it's important for students to learn. And let's focus on that before we worry too much about whether it's A-to-G.
Well, it would be wonderful to be able to ignore it. Because you're right, we should be focusing on what is it we need students to learn in order to be productive and successful and what we want them to be prepared for. But the reality is, we have a system now that is geared toward an A-through-G. Your program suggests that students should be prepared for a full range of college alternatives, which includes the UC, which puts you in the A-through-G camp. I mean, in terms of what you've got to do in high school in order to succeed with your program. So, I mean, as a matter of reality, we can't really avoid it, even though it would, it would be nice. The way we look at it is that the academics do need to be more relevant to keep kids engaged and students aware of why it is they're learning what they're learning in the academics. But that doesn't take the place of, nor should it necessarily be integrated with career technical education, which itself is a full-blown curriculum or a classroom experience that has its own values outside of the academics. So relevant academics, I think, is really the best piece of what Connect Ed is bringing to this discussion. But we don't want it to subsume or overwhelm career tech. We don't want career tech to get buried up into the academics. We've got to keep that as a separate program. It's complicated enough, making it robust and current and modern and having teachers to be able to do those programs. Very complicated, very intensive. And we're, we're afraid this approach will continue to put weight on and make it difficult to keep the CTE alive.
I want to thank both of you for your presentations, and I really actually enjoyed the point-counterpoint aspect to that, you know, I mean, it makes it much more interesting.
Sort of like the old song, "My wife."
That's right. That's exactly right. It was kind of like the, you zoom the Arkotoff show.
Don't say the line.
So, anyway, but I, again, appreciate, you know, your differing points of view. To Ms. Rothrock, I just wanted to ask, and you had made some recommendations about the community colleges and how the importance you see there, you know, vis-à-vis UC and CSU. I just wanted your thoughts, since, you know, the two boards are meeting together, I mean, how you see the community colleges, you know, from your viewpoint, you know, and the emphasis that you, you place on the, working with the K-12 system in terms of achieving, you know, some of the goals that the Manufacturers and Technology Association want to achieve.
Yeah, I think for the, for the Manufacturers in particular, there's, there's two linkages, if I could say, are the most crucial, I think, is that transfer, the, between high school and community college, and then high school to CSU. High school to community college, having least exposure to career technical education in high school will perhaps really improve how wise students are when they move into their community college programs. And it just obviously makes sense. You're turned on by something you have experienced in high school, and, okay, I want a certificate and that, you head to community college. The link between high school and CSU, I think, is really difficult now because CSU's adopted the A-through-G, and it's starting to, CSU, from my point of view, is starting to look kind of like UC, and students aren't seeing what I believe should be the case, which is that CSU is a polytechnic college. And CSU ought to require career and technical education from the high school kids that are getting admitted in CSU. I mean, I think it should go that far. I think they should differentiate their mission and make it something that's equal to CSU in terms of quality, but different. UC is for, for research or the other things that UC does. Going straight from high school to UC, I'm not sure the manufacturers feel that's an important issue to deal with. Those kids are going to go that way. But it's a smaller fraction, and the better route for the vast majority of the workforce that we'll be looking for are going to the community colleges, are going to CSU, are going to the community colleges, then CSU.
Thanks.
Just a quick question on terms of measurable outcomes and metrics. On the, from the A-through-G perspective, it's pretty easy to, or to at least find some metrics that are easily understandable and easily measurable in terms of college acceptance rates, and that's what principals and operators of high-performing schools tend to focus on. And from the perspective of the state board or a, a local LEA, it's fairly easy to see whether a individual school is succeeding or failing in, in terms of making sure kids are going to college. As the previous speaker mentioned, it is, I think, a, a problem that most school operators don't tend to focus on college graduation rates. They tend to focus on college acceptance rates, and that's a whole separate issue. But my, my question to you on, on the multiple, on multiple pathways, what are the outcomes from a multiple pathways perspective that we should look at to determine whether an individual school or whether an LEA is succeeding or failing and running a good program or not? The issue with college acceptance is that it's easily measurable and easily understood by the general public as well as public policymakers. Is there something commensurate with multiple pathways, an outcome that we can look at and measure and look at progress?
I'll, I'll take a crack at, at that. I think the answer is yes, with a lot of work still to do in the long run. So let me start with the long run first. We talk about college and career readiness quite frequently. That's, that term now kind of just rolls off the tongue without, I think, a lot of understanding about what it really means, and particularly the career readiness aspect of it. There is, in my view, a big intersection between readiness for college and readiness for career, but they are not the same thing, and we have a lot of work to do on clarifying the difference. To be a little bit more specific on that front, on the career readiness front, even by traditional measures, we are not paying attention to basic employability skills. We are not paying attention in any of the accountability work that we do as a state in students' mastery of industry and occupational knowledge. If you look at the intersection, we are not paying much attention to whether, to issues like technological literacy and what that means and how we would measure it and how we would assess it. We are not paying very much attention to broader definitions of communications skills, not only written and, and, and reading, but oral and visual and graphic and all of those things, which are much more heavily emphasized in career and technical education offerings. We're not paying attention to students' understanding of systems. We're not paying attention to students' mastery and understanding of concepts with respect to ethics. I mean, the list goes on. And the fact is that our definition of college readiness is quite narrow. I mean, it basically is focused on proficiency in mathematics and English language arts, little or no attention to science, little or no attention to social studies. We have a big job in front of us to get a lot clearer about what it means to be ready for both college and career. That said, in the short run, what are some things that you can look at? You can certainly look at the number of students who are completing a pathway, who are completing a coherent cluster or sequence of career and technical education courses as part of a pathway, where it's appropriate in a pathway, those students who are earning certification in an industry-related occupation, and incorporating that into the accountability systems that are part of our current system.
I guess, just to drill down a little farther, I, I think there's sort of two lenses towards to look at this, from the perspective of bodies like ours, where we can look at data and analyze it in a fairly sophisticated way. But what all, also, from the perspective of a parent who isn't paying attention to the stuff that we're paying attention to, a parent can look at a school, understand pretty clearly what the graduation rates are and then what the college acceptance rates are, and get a decent idea about what type of program that school can offer if they want to send their child to college. If they want to, if they want to send their child through a multiple pathways program and, and, and have their child graduate and go on to be a productive member of the workforce like we're talking about, what is a shorthand, easily-understood, parallel metric that they can look at from a multiple pathways perspective and know whether that's a good school or not a good school for their kid?
Well, one metric they should definitely look at is post-secondary transition, because pathways are intended to prepare students for transition to post-secondary, two-year, four-year apprenticeship. So that's the number one. It's not a question of abandoning that measure as an indicator of what is an effective pathway. They should look at that. They should certainly look at academic achievement and whether the pathway and participation in that pathway is leading to higher levels of achievement. They should look at measures like attendance and grade, on-time, grade-to-grade transition and high school graduation rates, because pathways are intended to produce those kinds of outcomes for students in high school.
I guess the missing data point is, we're talking about serving the economy in most of these discussions today, but yet, once a student's out of whatever level of education they're going to achieve, we have no idea whether they're going to work or not. At least, the school systems don't track their career experience for some number of years post that. So it's sort of a mystery, frankly. I think it's a big missing piece.
And I think, it was mentioned earlier, the importance of developing a longitudinal data system that would enable us to look much more closely, not only at transition from secondary to post-secondary, but from education to career and, and the world of work. I couldn't agree more about the importance of developing those.
I mean, it just seems to me that both may, public, just, sorry to dominate this, but I mean, I really think that that's a critical, critical issue. If you're going to build, if you want to build a public will for the type of system we're talking about, the public needs to understand it, and they need to understand whether they're getting value for their dollar. Parents, as the consumers, need to be able to understand whether the system is working for their kids. And it seems really opaque from a multiple pathways perspective for a relatively unsophisticated parent to enter the system and understand what they're getting.
Could ask a lot of good questions of business school deans, engineering school deans, professional schools in, in general, about how to do that. I think we have time for two more questions. Mr. Arkotoff, I know?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my question has to do with community colleges and K-12 systems collaborating. And if in your project, there are good examples of how the strength of community colleges, particularly in vocational, technical education, are being applied in a collaborative way with high schools?
The answer is, there are good examples, there aren't very many. Because right now, the opportunities to develop really solid concurrent, concurrent enrollment or dual enrollment opportunities are constrained by a number of policy obstacles, some of those I mentioned earlier. I do believe those are fixable, I think, and I think that those are largely a no-cost fix. But there's some serious work that has to be done to address legitimate concerns that the Department of Finance has about marginal savings versus marginal cost to the two systems, and putting in place a set of understandable, sensible policies that allow the systems to, in effect, you know, to put it perhaps too simply, buy services from one another. That does not exist, and, and until it does, we're going to wind up with exactly what we have, which is caps on enrollment and, on dual enrollment and real, serious constraints and the ability to take advantage of the expertise and the capacity that not only the community college system has, but other post-secondary institutions as well.
Just, this is a structural question. You know, once upon a time, not so long ago, the community colleges were part of the K-12 system right here. And we have a very decentralized structure where you have most of the local control, the power goes to the local districts, and then you have sort of accidents of history where you have millions of Californians who have gone through adult ed courses as part of K-12 districts. Is there, from your various vantage points, are there realistic, and I underscore that word, realistic structural changes that you would suggest that can be made to the California community college system and K-12 that would address some of these things where millions of people, you know, doing adult ed courses and where are they in these stats and where are they fitting into H-G? Isn't it time to sort of come after that? And we've got someone who was a leader in the legislature who thought through this stuff. It just, maybe it's time to go back to basics and sort of look at that.
Well, I, I like that last phrase, going back to basics, because I don't understand the system. I mean, I don't. And I, I didn't answer your questions earlier, because I don't have an answer, but you're suggesting multiple pathways is opaque, and I think the current system's opaque.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm a, I'm a mother, I have two kids. One went to the UC, graduated. The other is at American River Community College. And the completely different kids, y'all have this experience, you know, where do these kids come from? Why are they the way, like, why are they the way they are? And they're finding their way through, but it's completely random. It's been a random walk for me, and I pay attention to this stuff.
Right.
So I don't have an answer.
I, I wouldn't claim to have an answer either, but I, and I don't mean to sound Pollyannaish or self-serving about this. I think, though, that, that pathways can contribute to helping us out of this dilemma in the sense that, you know, a pathway does provide a certain degree of coherence from K-12 to not only two-year, but four-year college and into the world of work. And you can imagine industry, as well as, and Ted just mentioned, professional schools and four-year, we had, you know, in post-secondary, this is, we, this, this sort of issue of integrating happens all the time. You have schools of architecture and business, engineering, and nursing, and medicine, and law, and computer science, and the list goes on and on. I don't think that we, pathways, to me, create a wonderful opportunity to begin to engage the, the professional schools and the professional the, the professional schools and the professional departments in two-year and four-year colleges and universities in articulation between K-12, post-secondary, and ultimately, the world of work. And, you know, it's, it's much easier to bring industry and professional people together around a biomedical and science theme than it is to generally advocate for better secondary, post-secondary articulation, or better articulation between education and work. So, it's far from a complete answer. I don't claim for a minute to have a complete answer, but I, I think that pathways offer an opportunity here that we ought to try to exploit.
What are the incentives out there for institutions to engage in that at this time?
Well, they're not great, but I, I would argue that industry identification is a more powerful incentive. In, in other words, I mean, when we talk about school-business partnerships, whether it's at the secondary, post-secondary level, it's much easier to engage business and industry in a part, to, to engage biotech companies, for example, in a partnership with biotech academies articulated to biotech programs, whether it's at Laney College or wherever, it's much easier to engage them in that kind of focus than to talk to them about sort of generic help to either K-12 or post-secondary systems. I think we could provide a much more powerful set of incentives, as you, and, and again, I can't advocate, and I'm not advocating for specific legislation, but I think that the, the questions that Senator Protam Daryl Steinberg is raising about tax credits, and whether or not it's wise to refocus tax credits on encouraging this kind of more-focused pathway of participation by business and industry, is certainly an issue that's, that deserves discussion and, and closer examination.
So, I'm gonna exercise the prerogative of the chair while you guys are still there, because one of, one of the places where the community colleges and K-12 and, and the State Board in particular have a responsibility to work together and have worked together is on this cluster of issues. And the way we've worked together has been through the Joint Committee on Career and Technical Education. And an enormous amount of work on, on behalf of both of the boards has gone into trying to figure out both structural and operational solutions to, to some of these puzzles. And so, before we leave this topic and, and move on, and I, I do know we're pressed for time, but I'm wondering if a couple people who have been involved in that work might wanna sort of connect the conversation that we're having to that point of contact between us, and, please.
Thank you. In fact, that was on my notes of things to talk about possibly under next steps, but this is a great time, and I wanted to bring forward to, to the group, as we look and think about next steps, because the Joint Advisory Committee on Career Tech Education, we have had several members of both boards that have served on that, that joint committee, and primarily, we've talked about the areas of, related to Perkins and the Perkins funding, but I know that we've had some conversations about going beyond that and looking further into the areas of, of CTE, and probably Jim can, can help refresh my memory if I've missed some of that. But we've talked about the value of that and looking at that jointly together, the issues of CTE going beyond just the Perkins funding area. It doesn't seem like we've ever actually got that off the ground, but we have talked about that as, as an area that we had a mutual interest and felt like maybe we could work together. So, that was on my notes as well, as, as, is that something that there would be benefit and value to doing something like that beyond just this, this, and beyond the Perkins funding, but going beyond that to, to work towards a benefit and a value of looking at CTE?
I, I agree. Tana, we, we've focused a lot of energy on Perkins, because that's our charge, the Joint Advisory Council, just really, that's, that's our sphere of influence, but I, I think there's certainly some opportunities, and, and I had hoped that we could kind of have some good news today on this front, because I, I think there's some really intriguing information out there about the value of community colleges and how high schools and community colleges could work together. Eighty-three percent of your AA degree holders that come out of your system will earn at least as much as a four-year degree holder. Community college system is a, is a treasure for this state. We're seeing a disconnect from kids coming through a K-12 system not as prepared to understand the opportunities that exist in community college campuses. And it's got a lot more to do than, than just Perkins. We need to find a better way to talk about these issues than the JAC offers. It's, it's a very limited scope, it's a very difficult situation, because we have a Perkins Act that will be renewed, we think, and it will start a cycle of a couple of years of finding out how this is gonna work, and then it will expire, and we will start all over again. And in the meantime, a tremendous number of issues are, are blowing past us at a high rate of speed, and we're not addressing it. So, I don't think the JAC offers the best way to do this, but I think we really need to have the discussion that, that we're having today at a different level, on a much broader scale. This is far too important to just talk about, well, how many college graduates will we need? Folks, the average consumer knows more about the ingredients and the dog food they buy than the investment that they make in higher education in too many cases. They don't know.
That's right.
And we, we accept the neighbors' analysis of how good a college is, or, or we, we accept mythology and folklore, in some cases, about what our kids ought to do, and, and we know too much now to let that continue to happen. So, I'm, I'm thankful for the discussion today. I wanna thank the people that have presented so far, don't wanna dominate too much, but there's a lot more work to do that both these boards could, could find a better way to do it. JAC's not the solution.
No, and I think it is, it is, I think you are agreeing, and my experience on the group as well, is that it's very task-oriented, it's very detail-oriented, that the production of that application is a massive experience in itself. So, one of the things that, that we had talked about coming out of this, and we will pick it up in next steps, is the opportunity to perhaps identify a couple of target areas where we would like to deploy a joint task force to, to, to at least come up with a, a working agenda, a policy agenda for, for the two bodies to undertake separately, but toward a common goal. And for my money, this is, this is surely the ripest fruit on the tree. So, thank you very much. Let's, so let's move to the, to the next panel. And issues of assessment have come up before, and we're going to have an opportunity in, in our, our last panel of the day, to talk a little bit about the California Early Assessment Program, which is already, not just for the state, but for the nation, a model partnership between K-12 in the area and, and higher education and strengthening basic, basic skills and college readiness. And so, I, I hope that you guys won't mind, but I'm gonna abbreviate what, trust me, are flowery and wonderful introductions that your relatives would love to read, so that we can get on with this. But I'm doing so partly because I think that, that both Ken and Linda are well-known in the room. Ken Soris is the Director of Development and Outreach for CBE, the California Business for Education Excellence Organization, and EdResults.org. And Ken has been working to build business and education partnerships for, for quite, quite a long time. And Linda Michaelowski is Vice Chancellor for Student Services and Special Programs for the community college, for the Chancellor's Office and the community colleges. And Linda has developed a reputation as one, being one of the clearest cited leaders, not only about the future of community colleges, but about student success and what it takes to be able to make this migration from K-12 to, to higher education. So, thank you both very much for joining us. Apologize for a little bit of the, the, the time delay in, in getting you up here, but we're thrilled to have you with us.
Thank you very much. I, I'm actually going to start, but in the interest of the late hour, and knowing that we're standing between you and your first glass of wine of the evening, I think we're going to try to be very quick in our presentation and allow maximum time for questions and discussion from you. So, very quickly, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Early Assessment Program, it was initiated by the CSU system in coordination with K-12 some years ago, and its purpose is to give an early warning to students in the 11th grade that they are perhaps not on track to be performing at college level, so that they have the opportunity during their senior year to try to remediate those skill gaps while they're still in high school. The, the, the challenges are, are great, because many students are now taking the early assessment exam in the 11th grade, and the percentage of students who are demonstrating college readiness is very low. In 2009, eighty-two percent of 11th graders throughout the state took the EAP, and only sixteen percent of those demonstrated college readiness. Because the California State University established the, the definition of college readiness as meeting the 11th and 12th grade content standards that you have adopted, when we see that a, a small percentage are ready for college, it also means that that's a small percentage who are actually graduating at grade level. So, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to work together to try to, to address that and improve in the, the numbers of students who are college-ready when they leave high school. The EAP is based on the California Standards Test administered to all 11th graders, and it consists of fifteen additional questions in English and in math, as well as a writing sample. In the area of math, fewer students take the EAP, because it's only appropriate for students who have completed or are enrolled in Algebra II. But of those who do take it, similarly, only thirteen percent in 2009 were determined to be college-ready. Forty-four percent were determined conditionally-ready, so that if they take math in their senior year, there is potential for them to be at college level when they arrive at the CSU. We are right now in the process of joining the CSU in implementation of the EAP in the community colleges, thanks to legislation carried by then-Senator Jack Scott. SB 946 was signed in 2008. It authorized the community college system to implement the EAP. It authorized us to, it, it, it requires us to use the existing framework created by the CSU and the K-12 system, and provides no new funding for anyone to accomplish this. But it enables community colleges to voluntarily participate in the EAP, EAP program, and if they choose to accept results of college-ready in lieu of a community college assessment otherwise given to students in English and math. We made participation in the EAP available to the community colleges at two different levels. Any community college can now agree to accept EAP results in lieu of local assessment, beginning in the fall term, and thus far, thirty-one of the community colleges have agreed to do that. At another nineteen community colleges, they indicate that discussions are currently going on with their faculty, and so, we hope that by the end of this year, at least fifty of the community colleges will have made that decision. We've also invited community colleges to be full first-year EAP implementers, and for those colleges, they have designated an EAP coordinator who will work with the CSU and their high school EAP coordinators to make full use of the EAP as an opportunity to outreach to their feeder high schools, to students, and to help, to help those students bridge into community college from their high schools. We had a strong level of interest in being full implementers, considering the budget cuts that many of our outreach personnel have gone through. So, throughout the state, there are now growing partnerships that will be fully implementing the EAP. We, so we're very excited that, that it's moving forward, and we have committed to measuring EAP participation and outcomes from the very beginning. Ken's going to talk a little bit about the research that's been done on CSU students. We intend to track EAP students' enrollment in community colleges, their course-taking patterns, the, how the EAP results compare to local assessment results, and to look at the, any impact on the course completion and success rates for students who come through the EAP program.
So, I'm going to stop there, turn it over to Ken, and then we'll take your questions.
Great. Thank you for having me. I'm also here with a colleague, Nancy Brindleton, who represents the CSU Center for the Advancement of Reading, who lives and breathes the EAP on a daily basis, so she's here with me and can answer any questions as well. I represent a, a nonprofit, but it happens to be a business-led organization that serves as the, the business arm of the California Business Roundtable, and, and many of you could wonder, well, why, why do business leaders care about the Early Assessment Program? It seems, seems fairly specific. But as I think Hans Johnson said earlier, made pretty clear, that, that we face a, a critical issue in this state, and, and that is, we are gonna be short baccalaureate degrees that our economy demands by 2025. And equally as important is, is who those students will be, in terms of, are they African-American, Latino, English language, or it's low-income? Right now, they're not. And that is our future workforce, and we care deeply about closing the achievement gap as both a civil rights issue and an economic imperative for our state. Mr. Johnson talked a little bit about where the hot points are in terms of how do we increase that baccalaureate production? And, and of course, persistence rates, completion rates in, in four-year, transfer rates out of community colleges are critical ones, and there's a lot of inefficiency, there's a lot of opportunity there. Underlying that is, how are the students prepared coming into both the community colleges and the four-year institutions? And right now, we have a lot of competing benchmarks for how do we know whether students are leaving our high schools ready? The primary one, as you probably are aware, is, is the high school exit exam, which was stated earlier, is basically benchmarked at about an eighth grade level. For math, really, seventh grade level. It's an entrance exam, not an exit exam. At the same time, we have the Standards Test, which is not really integrated into the accountability system for high schools. It's an incredible tool for us at, at the lower levels, but does drive some decisions, but, but very little. The Early Assessment Program is now adding on to this to set a new benchmark in terms of what is expected of these students at college, and are we meeting it? And as Linda pointed out, we're making great progress on students taking this voluntary exam, mainly because it, it holds import to the, the students, because if they pass it, they can enter CSU in non-remedial courses, in other words, earning credit right away. The data's pretty stark in terms of students who are there needing remediation, how long they stay in remediation, and how few of them actually complete degrees. So, another point to President Mitchell about leakage in the system. Where we are still short is that we've, we've got eighty-two, eighty-five percent of these students now taking the exam, only sixteen percent are passing in language arts and thirteen in math. When you look at the demographics, it's quite stark. Just as a point of comparison, last year in the state, statewide, there were three-hundred-and-twenty-four African-American students who were college-ready in mathematics. Three-hundred-and-twenty-four statewide. That's not good. And, and so, we have a lot of work to do, and, and I, I think elevating the conversation about what we expect the output of our secondary system to be is really a critical one. So, just, I just wanna share a quick data chart, I think, that brings this home. At our organization, we pay very close attention to the Early Assessment Program data, and we actually are able, through a system that we've built through the California Business Community called EdResults.org, track longitudinal student data back to 2002. We have quite a robust system that's able to do this, and we were able to take a, a full student data set over nine years on the California Standards Test and the Early Assessment Program from six large urban districts, and, and those were Long Beach, Garden Grove, Sacramento, San Jose, Pomona, and San Francisco. So, so about twenty thousand students who took the Early Assessment Program in 2009. Big, big set of data. These are 11th graders. We then were able to backward map their performance on the California Standards Test back to the fourth grade. What we wanted to know was, where do they need to be in order to predict that they are going to be college-ready when they get to 11th grade in high school? And what you're looking at here- And what you're looking at here in the darkest blue are students who are advanced on the California Standards Test. The students in what's represented, it looks like it's gray there, are students that are proficient. And so basically, by the time they got to 11th grade, ninety-eight percent of these students were at least proficient on the California Standards Test in order to pass the Early Assessment Program, which is based on entrance expectations for the CSU, and increasingly for the community college system. All the way back to fourth grade, ninety-four percent of them, I believe, were at least proficient. So they need to be proficient at minimum, they need to stay there in order to be college-ready, and we're not reaching that benchmark very effectively today. This is mathematics. It looks very similar with a few dips, primarily from the vagaries of how the courses are sequenced in high school. And this is what's happening over time for those who did not pass the Early Assessment Program out of that data set. So in other words, those that were not college-ready in the 11th grade, this is what their data looked like back to the fourth grade. And I think what's most striking about this is that they pretty much stayed where they were throughout the process. And to us, that indicates that, as much as we like to think that we're moving students up the ladder as they go through the system, they really do not move that way. And that has a lot of implications about alignment of curriculum, about expectations, about delivery of instruction. The good news about the EAP is allowing us now to start to look for solutions in high schools that are having success on it, at least outperforming what we'd expect them to do. And for us, that's a solution set that we very rarely tap into. And so I think that's an area that's really promising. EAP bright spots, as much as the data can be a bit daunting about where we are to date, there's a lot of work that's going on. Linda touched on it, that there's really a system around the Early Assessment Program, not just about data, but about support and partnerships with K-12. There's a ton of work going on around curriculum development, around identifying gaps in the high school curriculum, particularly around expository reading and writing, that seems to be a big hole, and a lot of professional development for educators. I think we've got five thousand. Just in language arts, there's been about five thousand educators in the K-12 system that have gone through professional development around this work. And so there's a lot of work being done. The community colleges, for us, is an incredible partnership that's now growing rapidly in terms of their embracing of the EAP, and most importantly, developing more capacity in the field to support K-12, to talk about what do we expect of students coming in, and how can we be more proactive in helping more students get there. So I'll leave it at that.
Fantastic. Thanks. Ned Marizumi.
Again, thank you very much for very informative presentations, and thanks especially to Ken Sorey, who I've actually worked with myself in my own other professional career at my research institute, and really think that EdResults.org is one of the best data websites that I'm there for, not just for researchers but for parents. I just want to mention that when Tana Thomas and Jim Ashwandon were talking about the JACT, CCTE, which Ted and I also sit on, that one of the things that we did have, in addition to talk about Perkins, was we did have a presentation from CalPass, which is, whole purpose is to align expectations between the two systems. And I think that, although, of course, we are focused on the funding issue on the committee, but I think that that was an opportunity where we looked to see, like, well, how can we better align the expectations of both higher education, especially in the community colleges, and with K-12? So I think that there is a lot of progress being made along there, especially given the fact that Mr. Johnson and the others have mentioned that we need a longitudinal database, and CalPass actually offers that. And so I think that there is promise there. I wanted to ask, actually, Ken Sorey, when you look at the difference between the different scores on the California Standards Test and the EAP, what I've seen in a lot of schools is that even if you have a majority of students in the 11th grade who are proficient in, let's say, English, that you might have, like, only twenty percent of them who are college-ready in English on the EAP. And so, any thoughts about why that is, any better way to, you know, help align the benchmarks?
Yeah. And feel free to add to this. The primary difference, particularly from a language arts standpoint, as Linda mentioned, there's an augmentation to the CST. So a major, or component of the Early Assessment Program is the CST, and then there's additional questions. But there's also a writing prompt, and the writing prompt, I think, is probably where the biggest gap is exposed in terms of the curriculum within secondary ed, primarily around expository reading and writing. And the good news about that is that it's a fixable issue, and it's certainly something that, when examined at the secondary level, it's just not emphasized at all. And so, and that's what colleges are saying we need these students to be able to do. So in that sense, it's actually, you know, a good thing that we can expose that and then start to provide the support needed for the schools to adjust their curriculum.
Just to add, the California Diploma Project, which is California Version of the American Diploma Project, involves all sectors of education and higher education in the state, and it has played an active role in looking at the EAP and its implications. ACHIEVE did an actual content analysis of the questions on the EAP, as well as the California Standards Test, and has given us a wealth of data to work with to look at exactly what it's measuring, where the gaps are, and I think that we intend to do further work. The coalition around the EAP includes a subcommittee of the P-16 Council. So we've got Nancy and others representing the work that's being done at CSU on an advisory committee for implementation of the community college program. CalPass is an active partner with us in implementation. So I think that as we identify potential gaps and issues, that we certainly have the pieces in place to address those, and I think that ultimately it can make a significant difference in the pathway from high school to college. And of course, for community colleges, it's so important because historically, high schools have tended to worry more about the students who identify as being on a college track, which often means a four-year college track. And there's kind of been an assumption that the students who are going to community college will be taken care of when they get to the community college. And it's, we do our best, we do try to take care of all of them, but for those who arrive ready to do college-level work, their prospects are much brighter. So I think that that's, it's increasing those numbers in our pipeline that really drive us to do this work.
Mr. Jones, you get the last question.
It's got to be really good there. If we were to adopt Common Core standards, what impact would that have?
That was a pretty good question.
You know, I think the EAP is not a curriculum.
It certainly is an integral part of, I think, what we could do in order to measure the output of whatever set of standards we have. I think it certainly would be a good measure of Common Core. It's also being looked at as a model nationally, and I think we should all be commended for putting something in place that's quite innovative. And so it's part of the discussions nationally through ACHIEVE and others about, you know, how can we integrate something like this into Common Core? Because it's one thing to put in the standards, it's another to say whether we're actually getting the results out of it there.
Thanks. So for members of the public who've been very patient, I want to turn the gavel back over to President Maloumet. But before I do, or as I do, to thank
Thank you both for being here. And thank all of our panelists for sparking a very high level of engagement in this group and the conversations that I know that we will work to track and to pull together as we talk about next steps.
Thank you. Vice President Himmelstein?
Yes. We have one member of the public who would like to speak, Jane Patton, the President of the Academic Senate for the California Community Colleges.
Thank you to both of the boards for, I will take one minute of your time. I could barely contain myself as you talked about linkages between schools and colleges in CTE, because for two years, I was the faculty director of the largest of the SB70 grant initiatives, which is to link schools and colleges in CTE. You probably remember a senator by the name of Jack Scott, who wrote a bill called SB70, and the purpose of that bill was to link schools and colleges in CTE. And the Academic Senate of Community Colleges, in conjunction with the CDE, has developed an infrastructure and a system for the high school teachers and the ROP teachers in CTE fields to sit down with their counterparts at the community colleges and develop articulation agreements between the segments. To date, we've developed eleven hundred articulation agreements across the state in fifty-eight disciplines, all of the industry sectors, and so far, I think about forty colleges are on board with it. This means that a high school or an ROP student who takes, say, a year-long class in food preparation or health occupations may get community college credit for the first semester and already see himself as a college student and feel connected to the college. It's a really exciting program, and for next steps, you might want to find ways to piggyback with that initiative, which has already been developed. There are two handouts. Scott, were those given to you up there? Oh, okay, they're over here. Sorry, I was thinking that Jerry gave them up front. One of the things that this initiative developed is a website called WhoDoYouWantToBe.com. And you're going to get a business card. It is geared to high school kids to get them excited about CTE and excited about college, and it is a wealth of information. But because the kids may not get to that website on their own, we've developed a counselor's kit, and it's been disseminated across the state for high school counselors, to tell them all about the CTE program so that they can counsel students more effectively. And I have a few copies of some of the posters about Who Do You Want to Be?, which you're welcome to take if you want to. It's suitable for framing in your office. So I want to thank you for your interest. I began my career teaching high school. I am thrilled to have opportunities to link the schools and colleges, and this is one success story we can all claim, and thank you to both boards for your support.
Well, thank you, and you also get credit. You sat through our two days with us, so thank you very much. And I will tell you, my friend's daughter, who graduated UC Santa Barbara last year, who's at home waitressing, I put her on WhoDoYouWantToBe.com, because she really doesn't know what she wants to do. So I know there's links to help students figure out what areas they'd even want to go into now. So I'll conclude, I'll let President Mitchell say some closing remarks. I'm very happy that we were able to do this. We're going to transition into the social part and getting to know you in other ways also, and we will definitely talk about future ways that our boards can work together. So thank you for putting the effort forward, Board of Education for coming up, and thank you to my board for spending the day, the afternoon here. So we really appreciate it.
Thanks, and again, thanks for your hospitality. And a special thanks, this is sort of the baton handoff. So board members, the Community College Board has been meeting for the last two days. Imagine ourselves Thursday late. Thank you. So I hope you'll join me in thanking President Maloumet and the members of the board for staggering through in great style. You will now think me a killjoy, and I apologize, members. Let me remind you that while we are going to engage in a social interaction, that discussing particular items of business is strictly prohibited by open meetings laws and et cetera. So with that reminder.
We will show you our lighter side. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.